Council, if you will come to order, we do have a quorum tonight. Councilmember Tim Kurtz will be a little late, but he will be at the meeting and it is 7:00 PM and I will call the meeting to order. In just a moment, I'll ask everyone to stand. We'll be led in an invocation this evening by Councilmember Perro and then be led in pledges to the American flag and the Texas flag by Councilmember Barrow. Would you please stand?
Please join me. Merciful Father in heaven, we are indeed grateful for another day of life. We're grateful for this opportunity to come together here in this place to discuss the business of this community. We pray that you'll give us the wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions, to do those things that'll provide for the residents of this town in the best way possible and help us to be mindful, Father, as we do our work here and we live our lives, that we realize as we look at the storms around us and the damage that the power in the universe that you've created can do to those things we own, even life itself can be taken. May we always be mindful that we have no assurance that we'll have another moment of life or another moment of what we own. It could all be taken away in a heartbeat and so let us always be grateful to you for all the blessings you bestow upon us and in Christ's name that we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. Citizens' presentations, this is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that indicates the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Council, I have two speakers tonight. One is Jim Thomas. Jim, you want to come up, identify yourself and your address and you have the floor.
Before I get started, please forgive me. I have written this out, talking as fast as I can, I can get it done in four minutes. So I apologize for going as fast as I'm going to go. My name is Jim Thomas and I reside at Seven Meadow Brook Lane. While I'm currently a director on the Mud One Board, I want to make it perfectly clear that my comments tonight are solely my own and in no way are to be construed as representing the Mud One Board as a whole. At the end of last month's-
Slow down, Jim. You don't have to try to push yourself.
Well, Nick, I-
Just stay on topic.
If you'll give me four minutes and 30 seconds, I can do it.
You're good. Just do it.
At the end of last month's Mud One meeting, Councilman Philip Schaffner commented to me that I needed to, and I quote, "Stop letting everything get under your skin." That night, I absolutely was frustrated and it was very evident. My frustration was over the repeated difficulties this council and our mud board have had in communicating with each other and at the barbs being thrown at the mud via social media, many of those by members of this very council. In my view, this communication problem started with the horrible experience we all went through trying to get work started on the mud's wastewater treatment plant. We spent nearly seven months arguing over a whole bunch of stuff and almost lost two new restaurants in the process. Instead of all of us working together as elected officials in Trophy Club to get a severe mutual problem that affected all of our residents solved in as quick and timely a manner as possible, we created seven months of total chaos that should never have happened. Mayor Sanders, I want to thank you and mud president Jim Moss personally tonight for you two men got together and came up with a plan that worked in spite of the rest of us, which finally got the situation out of deadlock, prevented the loss of the two residents, and finally got the wastewater treatment plant permit issued quickly. So tonight, again, speaking only for myself, I'm telling each one of you that I am in full agreement, I am in full agreement with the statements each of you made at the end of your January 16 council meeting. Mud One should totally get out of the fire services business. As we go forward building our respective budgets for next year, we need to establish a fair market value and the town needs to buy everything from the district and totally own it yourself. The fire department land, the fire department building, all the fire equipment and assume the debt associated with it. Why do I feel this is now the right thing to do? And Nick, this kind of addresses, I mean, Mayor Sanders, forgive me, this kind of addresses a concern that you had expressed. If I can quote, and I'm sorry, Tim, Councilmember Kurtz is not here, but if I can quote Councilmember Tim Hertz, you know, why I feel this is now the right thing to do. When it trot, when it trotta, with the trotta coming online, according to our attorney, there's simply no ILA that anyone can construct giving full operational control to the Town of Trophy Club for all fire services, which will keep Westlake from eventually challenging the mud's current fire tax on their residents and property holders. According to our attorney, it can't be done. So what becomes the right thing to do? I totally agree with all your comments expressed after your executive session on January 16. Councilman Jim Perro, if the town owns everything, our firemen will no longer have any concerns about where the chief reports and their job security. Councilman Garrett Reed, I completely agree with you that it's this council's responsibility to protect the safety and welfare of all the citizens in Trophy Club and I agree that you need to step up and take responsibility for this. Councilman Ryland Rowe, you are absolutely right that now is the time to develop a clean slate and one that makes the most sense to all the people of Trophy Club. Mayor Sanders, this fixes the broke situation you referred to and it definitely allows the town to go out and recruit the best possible fire chief you can find in a much easier manner. Mayor Pro Tem Greg Lamont, hopefully no one will be shocked with the town taking over 100% ownership and complete control of the fire department. I'm sorry, Councilman Kurtz is here, but for Councilman Tim Kurtz, I agree with you that Mud One should not take over everything, but that the town should do so as this would be the right thing to do for all of us. Councilman Philip Schaffner, this resolves all issues the town's blue ribbon panel committee had as well as all the other groups you referred to that night as there would now be only one budget, only one boss, only one ownership, the Town of Trophy Club. Now, I fully recognize this is going to be a challenge financially to accomplish, but that's what our, that's what your financial staff, which is excellent, is in place to do. If we agree this is the right thing to do, then they need to come up with the best possible way for the town to buy the mud district's fire department assets. So once again, I finish my comments by saying they are simply that, my own, but I know of no better way to have an honest, sincere, straightforward dialogue between the mud and the town to solve this broke situation. And for y'all's information, I have already requested that this subject be placed on Mud One's agenda for next week and I will go into that meeting with the strong stance of what I've said to you tonight. From my perspective, my perspective, buy it, own it, run it, and protect the safety and welfare of all of our citizens as that is your job and I agree. Let's get on the same page, guys, and let's all do the right thing. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. All right, Ted Powell, would you come forward, state your name, your address, and you have the floor, sir.
All right, sir. Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council, staff. My name is Ted Powell. I live at 12 Reading Court in Trophy Club and you've all heard from me several times over the past eight months with regard to the community garden. I was prepared to come here tonight with a little bit different approach to this community garden. However, late this afternoon or early this evening, I received a text message from Mr. Adams, which has resolved most of my concerns. As you all know, I had, my wife and I had zero desire to have this community garden next to our property. I believe we have now solved that issue and perhaps very soon we will see the boxes and the, some of the things removed. So for that, I'm very grateful, Mr. Adams, and I'm very grateful to mayor, you and the council for the time you have spent on this and willing to listen to Judy and my concerns, right? I just would ask one thing. Obviously, I'm not letting this thing go forever, I guess. Shame on me, but what I would like to see is after we get all this removed, and I will say that Mr. Adams and I have agreed that we will have a meeting sometime in the near future and to talk through this a little bit more, all right? But really what I would like to see is since it sounds like the garden is going to be moved, right? Let's return that piece of property to a green space. So let's plant some grass in there, put some trees in there, and let's make it look like the rest of the park, right? I really think that's the right thing to do with it. Then we have a park that is very attractive to everybody and it really does everything that I think we want to do with it. So I would just ask you to think about that and I know that costs money. And having managed budgets for several years, I know that sometimes we run into some things that take a little bit more money and maybe we have to go get a little bit more money. I don't know. But I would just ask you to really consider making that a green space again. What I would really like to see, but we've talked about this in the past and it hasn't gone very far, and that's sell me about half of that corner. But I understand there's some, some things that make that a little bit difficult to do, so if we can't do that, let's turn it into a green space and make it a part of the park and something we'd all be proud of. So that's all I have to say. Mr. Adams and I will meet, we'll talk about it and see what his thoughts are, right? And what, what my thoughts are and we will proceed from there. But again, I just want to thank you guys for everything that you've done on, not only on, on this project, but for what you do for the Town of Trophy Club. I commend you all for the job well done.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' presentations? No one else, Ali?
No, mayor.
All right, we will move on to announcements. We moved announcements up to the front of the agenda so that maybe citizens who came to talk about something at the front might actually hear some of the announcements firsthand as opposed to late in the evening when we typically have them. So I think that was a good suggestion. And so item one is Town Manager's sales update regarding the following. Discussion and provide input regarding same. Trophy Club Women's Club Gardens Garage Sale. Tentative dates. RFQ for entryway signage, et cetera. Town Hall groundbreaking event date and volunteer dinner. Stephen?
Yes, mayor and council. The first item is the Trophy Club Women's Garage Sale. As you know, every year they come before P&amp;Z and council and request the ability to hold a townwide garage sale twice a year. It's a big event. Know that they will be coming forward here in the next, I think P&amp;Z is this Thursday as they have it, and then it'll be on the March 22 council agenda. Right now, the dates are tentatively set for April 30th and October 1st and we've been fielding a lot of questions, so that's why we're trying to get the information out because people are interested as kind of that spring cleaning comes around. As soon as we have a confirmed date, we'll start putting those events or those items on our event calendar and letting people know what to do and we can assist the women's club with getting the word out. RFQ for entryway signage, et cetera. This is an item that deals with our entryways. We have four major entryways at Bobcat, Trophy Lake, Trophy Club, and Trophy Wood. And how do we want those entryways to look with the redesign? How do we want our medians, especially as you come into town? Do we want to enhance those? We want to design, for example, on Trophy Club Drive, we have those obelisks that are made out of white stone. Do we want to look at doing something different? Do we want to do some public art? And as well as having a consistent theme throughout town for the wayfinding signage and for park signage. You know, as you, as you may remember, in our budget, we had some monies identified for wayfinding signage and park signage, but I kind of said, hey, you know what? Let's take a bigger approach and a bigger picture to this and develop maybe a phasing plan. And so we've developed an RFQ and that's on the street right now, asking for those requests for qualifications from appropriate firms. Town Hall groundbreaking event, we've talked a little bit about this, but the date is scheduled for Friday, May 6th and we are tentatively set for 4:30 PM start time and we'll be getting those details out to the public. And the volunteer dinner, the volunteer appreciation banquet that we hold every year is scheduled for May 20th at Trophy Club Country Club and will begin at 7:00 PM. One of the things that we're trying to do a little bit different this year is to encourage more mingling and so it's the idea of people being able to talk and walk around and so we'll be serving several different types of appetizers and setting up a similar event to the Founder's Day for those who attended that with kind of high top tables and we'll also have seating. And we do plan to have a cash bar available for those who would like to have that. We're going to be mailing invites in early to mid-April to get the word out. We can also start putting some things out there saying, hey, just FYI. So what we're going to try to, we've traditionally held that in the fire station with kind of big tables. It's really hard to hear. It doesn't really encourage a lot of interaction amongst people, so we thought maybe we try this this year, make it a little bit nicer, hold it at the club and it's, you know, we've, Jay-Z's been doing a lot of work with this along with April, so they've been kind of putting it together. So anyway, that's, that's those updates. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Council, do you have any questions or comments?
It's nice to actually see that there were citizens that heard it this time as opposed to an empty audience.
Stephen, thank you very much. Consent agenda, all matters listed on consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does anyone wish to remove any of the items two through six? Hearing none, I would consider a motion to approve item two. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the minutes dated January 29 and 30, 2016. Item three, consider and take appropriate action regarding the minutes dated February 9, 2016. Item four, consider and take appropriate action regarding the minutes dated February 19, 2016. Item five, consider and take appropriate action regarding a resolution approving the submission to the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division for a grant application for the Regional Mobile Crime Scene Unit Program for the 2016-2017 fiscal year, authorizing the town manager or his designate to execute all necessary documents. And item six, consider and take appropriate action regarding a resolution approving the submission to the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division for a grant application for the Security Video Management System Program for the 2016-2017 fiscal year, authorizing the town manager or his designate to execute all necessary documents. Does someone wish to move?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items two through six.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Lamont, seconded by Councilmember Rowe. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Item seven.
Tim's not here yet. You want to maybe hold that one until he's here? Sure.
It has been suggested that maybe we delay on item seven a little bit to see if Tim Kurtz arrives.
He's here. Oh.
Look at that.
Hello, everybody.
And if I had a motion to adjourn, we'd leave. All right, sorry, Tim. All right. Item seven. Consider and take appropriate action regarding design modifications of Trophy Club Town Hall and discussion of same. Am I taking one in passing or what am I doing?
You got three of them there.
It's three, three pages.
So I'm taking a page and passing it down.
Here, no, no, here's your three.
It's like a packet.
That's your three. I can't speak for the others.
Oh, okay. So what are we doing?
Keep passing it down.
Pass them down. You got yours?
I pass that down.
So you didn't take any?
Oh, there's the, there's groups of three. There's three. All right, I've got one.
Do you have three? You have three?
We're missing one.
We're missing one. There we go.
Mayor Pro Tem, just title went to his head.
Well, you know, you know, if we got stuff beforehand, it'd be fine.
All right, Stephen, you want to start this?
Yes, mayor and council. Tonight is a continuation of some previous discussions that we've had over the past few meetings regarding the facility, the budget, and some of the amenities that are located at the facility. One of the items that was discussed at the last meeting was, is there a way to save some space that will work for the council chamber, the admin, and the PD? And so Tom and his team took that task and has come up with a possible solution that I think is warranted to really look at. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom.
Thanks, Stephen. Yeah, at the last meeting, you'd asked us to, was there a way to reduce some of the square footage in the yellow area, primarily the council chambers? You were not opposed to putting the ramp up to the dais out in the room. So this is the original plan and we had a ramp that was apart from the room in this particular area on the left. And so we studied that and came back with an idea that, again, if you're not opposed to having the ramp out in the room over on the right side or probably best on the right side, we were able to slide the whole building over five feet. So effectively, the five feet that we talked about at one point in time of deleting from the building, we're essentially doing that and really not losing anything with the exception of how we handle that ramping. We lose a little bit of space out in this work area to the left where our customer counter will be, but it's not detrimental in terms of that work environment. And then our break area, this glass wall in the back shrunk about five feet, but we still have the same amenities. So we got a cost back from Steel Freeman in excess of $51,000 for your consideration. I think it's a pretty good value. Might be something you want to consider.
So to clarify, when I look at the picture on the left, if you come in the lobby, to the left there where it says TH Lobby.
Correct.
What that did is remove some chairs and seating and a closet from that area.
We had this little closet we intended to use for the recycling bins.
That's right.
So we have suggested we lose that and that space was about, do you think, Alexi, 10 or 12 feet wide originally? So 10 or 12 feet and we've probably taken it down to six or seven feet and with some tweaking, I mean, as we get into the plan, we might be able to take this customer counter here and scoot it back just a little bit. I don't want to get this too choked up that it's uncomfortable in there, okay?
So my concern was enough room for some chairs in there.
Yeah, and I think if you want us to proceed with this, what we would look at is can we move this customer counter back a couple of feet, accommodate the chairs, not be crowded, and still accommodate the workstations, which I think we can.
Okay. Council, any comments about this proposed design? So Stephen, I think, what did we, what did they estimate the cost savings was of doing this?
A budget cost of just over 51,000.
Okay. All right, anybody have a comment? Pro or con?
Hundred percent in favor. That, and that, that cost impact estimate reflects what we talked about two weeks ago for five feet.
Same five feet.
We talked about five feet and it was roughly 10,000 a foot, so.
Did it narrow that conference room on the left?
No, sir.
All right, same size. So all, okay.
I think they did a really good job finding a creative way to reduce some space and save some money, but functionally keeping everything the same size.
And the challenge you had a little bit was the length of the ramp required and still get the wall, the portable wall to come across.
And for your consideration, we've dropped it down to one step like this. So now it's a six-foot ramp. If you want to go two steps, which is originally what we had, it'd be 12 feet, which we could still accommodate, but you can see what one step does for you.
Good enough.
Okay. I like it. Anybody else comments?
I agree. Yeah, I like it.
Anybody else want to, don't like it? Anybody? All right. Stephen, sounds like to me that nobody has spoke against it and several have said, looks like a good plan.
Great.
For the savings. All right, go ahead, Stephen.
Yeah, and then the second part was I provided a summary of where we stand from revenues available and also any items that we may want to consider or reconsider based upon available funding. With this chamber savings of approximately 50,000, 51, according to Tom tonight, reductions that we've made from the last couple of meetings, we have, we're $127,000 below. The storm drainage fund has $100,000 that you allocated last time as available revenue.
Below what, Stephen?
It's below, it would be the, we're using 2.25 million from CCPD.
Right.
So if we would have included that, we're $127,000 under budget.
There, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. And so we still have $100,000 of storm drainage that we haven't touched, $100,000 from additional CCPD funding that they allocated last time to ensure certain things that they would like to see happen, like the fencing. So all told, in terms of available revenue, without contingency at this point, we're $377,000 to the good.
But in terms of budget, we are 127 under without contingency.
That's right.
Plus, we've got a, plus we've got an offer, for lack of a better term, from CCPD.
Right.
We have an additional $100,000.
So we're $125,000 under budget.
Yes, sir. So, and that's where, there were items that I've kind of identified, but there may be other items that the council would like to talk about or discuss. I don't know, this, I wanted to show you what today's revenue picture looked like because now is the time, as they start trying to finalize, now that you've made the discussion or the decision about the council chambers, they're really going to go hard on finishing the construction documents so that they can go to bid, hopefully the first part of April and then we get, we know what those bids are so that we can get under construction as soon as possible.
And just for discussion purposes, if I can, Nick, if you don't mind, because I know at least one of us is competing for election and a lot of us, well, this will come up. Originally, when this was brought back, we were over budget by how much?
About a million dollars.
So we were about a million dollars over the budget that we had asked y'all to do and this council challenged y'all. Y'all worked extremely hard, everybody put their, sharpened their pencil and worked on this and now we've gone from over budget by a million dollars to under budget by $125,000, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just for the record, I wanted to put that out there.
So the $125,000, not counting what CCPD is putting in, correct?
Correct. Not the additional.
Nope.
Okay.
Not the addition of the, the original $250,000, that does count.
And how much of the 100,000 are they wanting to use?
I think they would be happy using all of it.
Says here, looks like about 60, 63.
Maybe this is a better question. What are they wanting to, to use that 100,000 for?
That's a good question.
They wanted, they wanted, the only thing they actually committed on was the fence, the security fence. It's what they committed on, but it needed more for the police department, that's why they made it 100,000. So they knew the fence was between 40 and 50 and they just added, made it, rounded up to 100, just in case other things popped up.
As I heard the discussion, as I heard the discussion, they understood that things were overbid, that the chief and his staff had tried to reduce as best they could. They talked about, can we do away with one holding cell and they didn't want to do that at all. And they were concerned about security cameras and lighting in that secure area. So there was a good bit of discussion around that and, and I think to jump it up, we want our fence, was kind of the feeling and we recognize we need to maybe put in a little more just because the cost has gone up.
Okay, let me, let me ask this then. Did we take out any cameras and lighting? They're asking for that. Did we remove any?
We didn't.
No, when, when we did our original scope, we did take some out of the PD because we had ones at every door, every hallway. We had additional stuff, just we put a camera everywhere you could want to see something. So we did take some, but nothing that's security, but in the lighting, which Stephen can talk about, we have a question of what's out in the parking lot and Stephen can answer that one.
Yeah, we had 36 cameras originally, security cameras in the building and outside the building, which was, you know, that's, that's a lot of cameras. Yeah, we had thirty-six cameras originally, security cameras in the building and outside the building, which was, you know, that's, that's a lot of cameras. We reduced that by about, I think, four or five on the police side and we reduced it by about over ten or twelve on the, on the rest of the facility. So now there's, there's sixteen cameras in there, which is still a lot of security cameras. As far as the lighting goes, one of the vendors that, that is going to bid on the lighting aspect is a smart LED lighting fixture that also has a smart camera device attached to it, so.
For external?
Correct.
Okay.
For the parking lot.
It's a pretty cool camera, really. I mean, it's, I mean, it's a cool lighting fixture, I'm sorry.
And then, and then a power, a power grid out in the parking lot to plug our trailers or whatever they need in.
So basically, we're, we're talking probably they're going to use that entire hundred thousand, I guess.
I don't think so.
So how much, how much are we adding to that one-twenty-five, I guess is what I'm trying to come up with?
Well, the one-twenty-five has nothing to do with that, but if you take the fence out and you use this hundred thousand to pay for the fence, you just got forty-five thousand back.
Okay.
So now you went to one-sixty something.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at, so where are we at?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, I-
They only need roughly fifty thousand of the hundred thousand.
And I have, I have no problem with that. I think that that's, if they, you know, felt that was a need, who am I to question, you know, that?
Just bought you a little bit bigger cushion.
Yeah.
So Roland had his hand up.
So the item, this version of the fence that is sixty-three thousand, three fourteen, is that the one that we just-
No, no, it's fifty.
It's fifty thousand, what that, that's a running total.
Oh, I see that, okay, my bad. Okay, so the fifty thousand one, is that the one? I think, going back to our old discussion, that's the one that's mostly wrought iron with some masonry right around the entrance, right? So that's what we talked about, as, that's what we had eventually landed on, is what we wanted to do anyway.
Well, see, I-
So, well, I have one other follow-up and it's for you guys. Is there a way for us to, because I, what I, what I want to be able to do is if, is I want to be able to honor the intention of the CCPD board for that remaining fifty? Is there a way we can, we can, we could approve or whatever that as a contingency, as an additional contingency? But have it as an intentional contingency for things that arise on the PD side of things? Because you're going to have, obviously, you've already talked about some things that may come up, so.
There was some, there was some discussion about the fact that, that if you remember, we took action as a council to put two hundred thousand dollars aside for crime prevention related things. They still haven't worked that issue at all. The chief hasn't worked that to say, where do I need those funds, what are going to do with those? So there was somewhat of a feeling of the fact that we have funds that we will look to, to do things as the program comes up.
What do you mean, two hundred thousand?
Remember, we set aside two hundred thousand dollars in the budget?
But that was for specific, that wasn't for crime, that was for drug.
Drug.
We were very specific on that.
Understand that.
Okay.
Well, I just used a general term of crime prevention, so, yeah.
Well, one, one of the things on that, I didn't want to be presumptuous that you would accept the additional hundred thousand dollars from the CCPD. So, you know, it's, you know, when I, you know, on the landscaping, you know, we have tree mitigation funds that come from the Crumpton office for the, for the next two years. Our ordinance says that tree mitigation funds can be used for landscaping and then we also have some funding, funding this year and this year's FY16 budget. And so if you wanted to do that, that could be a zero impact. You know, same thing with the PD fencing, you could take fifty thousand from that CCPD and basically that makes that impact to the bond a zero, it takes it off the table. So I didn't want, and even the retaining wall, you know, I know, one of the things we didn't really touch on last time is the retaining wall also serves as, as a, a artificial barrier to being able to get a vehicle or some type of other thing up next to the building. And that's something we didn't touch on. Do I think that we're going to have a threat like that in town? Probably not. But again, that's something that CCPD could pay for because it does act as a deterrent.
What is the, do we know what it would, excuse me, what it would cost to install bollards there inside the sidewalk on that, for that length?
Oh, I, do you know what a bollard? I don't, do you know what?
About four hundred each.
So we could-
Yeah, I've done a few.
Because part of what I'm looking at is-
Or a couple of thousand dollars, you could do it.
You could replicate that for a couple hundred thousand dollars, save the money here. I mean, I'm sorry, did I say a couple hundred thousand?
Yeah, you did.
I'm just a baller, I like to talk in big numbers.
I'm going to put them everywhere.
You were talking about your, your median stuff, we can put them on all the medians in town. Now, what I'm looking at this is, is a big picture. Garrett made the point upfront is that, where are we relative to our budget? So I, I, when you said safety in that email you sent, I was like, oh, that's a great, that's a great point. I mean, every place you look, they have something like that, police departments and other buildings. So it's a good point, but I'd rather, my thought process would be to, to go a little cheaper and then if, if somebody wants to do landscaping in the future, nothing, there's nothing stopping them from doing that, you know?
Right.
Well, I, I'll comment. I think the retaining wall along the PD side of the building, I think it makes the complex look better personally. I don't think it's a big expense to accomplish that. Part of what Stephen has said to me, I don't recall if he put it in an email or not, but recognize that this is the front of what people are going to see. We're going to have nice restaurants up there, other nice things, hopefully. That'll be the entrance to where we're coming in and so aesthetically, I think, as pleasing as possible. And I would rather see a retaining wall as opposed to bollards, just based on how it looks personally, but that's just me, so. Did you, have any other thing else you wanted to say, Stephen, before we?
Yeah, one, one thing about, well, I, I did ask Tom to give some kind of pros and cons to terrazzo. And terrazzo is, it's, it's a aggregate substance that's poured and then it's, it's layered with a polyurethane, so it's a very durable surface. It has a very long life to it if you maintain it. And so I wanted to at least have the discussion about pros and cons to each and then how often do you replace, you know, versus, you know, one versus the other? You know, is it a lo, it's a long-term investment, you kind of get one shot in terms of being able to do terrazzo just because it's a little easier to do before the building's completely finished, it's not impossible, but, Tom?
Stephen, gentlemen, you know, terrazzo, and you're probably familiar with it, you would see it at the airport in, in all the new renovation they've done or in Terminal D and up where the Sky links are. So, you know, just as a sample, this is terrazzo. It's a particular color palette we used on the Tarrant County Sub Court House in, in Hurst. It's a, every product is custom, so once we determine a color palette for the building, we would have samples made of various aggregates and fillers and epoxies for, are in your approval. So you, you just don't pick it off the shelf. Terrazzo, in our opinion, is the life of the building. You will never replace it in this building for the life of this building. If there's one downside of terrazzo, it can be slick if it's wet. Therefore, we always use a, a walk-off mat at the entry to the building, which we are proposing to do if we do the terrazzo in this building. The alternative of that would be a porcelain tile of some kind. We have not picked finishes. We need to do that with y'all soon, but just to give you an example, it would probably be a tile that's, the larger the tile, the better. Then you have less joints and it might be something like a product like this that's, some of them are slicker, we, we don't promote that. Again, you have that, that slipping capability, but something that's got a little matte to it, okay? We tend to like darker colors because then we could use a darker grout. Because the problem with the, with the tile is the grout, so we try and get a very engineered piece of stone that we can get a narrow grout, hopefully an eighth inch, and then we do a dark grout joint. The life of the tile, twenty, thirty years probably, probably thirty years, so, so a, a long time. But it's two different looks, it's two different products.
What about maintenance on the grout itself over that period of time to clean it and keep it looking?
And Jim, that's why we suggest, we're going to do a dark grout. So we like a darker tile, we'll do a dark grout, we seal it, we use an epoxy grout, but I can tell you over time, where the traffic is, it tends to, to get darker. That's just the nature of it, no matter what we do.
Is there no grout with terrazzo?
That's correct, there's no grout with terrazzo. Terrazzo is poured and then it is, it is sanded in a number of steps.
Like an epoxy floor?
It's an epoxy floor.
Okay, that's what I know it as.
It is ground, you can do different colors, that costs you a little more, but you could do a variation of color. You can do the logo and it is, it is ground in a couple of steps until they get to the final, final topping. We tend to like to take the terrazzo and wrap it up as the base as well, okay, it comes right up the wall. We would use tile base if we did tile.
I just had a tenant, I, I don't know if you've had any experience with this, but I just had a tenant this past week, asked me what the cost difference was between a terrazzo floor and a polished concrete. Have you?
I've done, I did polish concrete in the-
Is there a cost difference? I'm about to find this out.
Yes, a terrazzo will still be a lot more.
With polished concrete?
If we're talking about-
He showed me a picture.
I, I like it.
It looked really sharp.
We used it at the Watauga Fire Station in the dining room and kitchen and so on. And we did not have a suspended slab there and you get some hairline cracks, just shrinkage cracks. You see that in that product.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, we shouldn't have the cracks.
And they didn't like it, they covered it up then.
Oh, you get the cracks, it's part of the motif, so to speak. We do it in a lot of clubs.
The polished concrete?
I like the product, but you've got to recognize that, and we do have a suspended slab.
So we shouldn't get the cracks.
And we should not get the cracks.
Right, but I mean-
You're still going to have temperature, you're still going to have what we call shrinkage cracks.
Yeah, you're going to get them.
Shrinkage cracks.
You're going to have some hairline, you're going to have some hairline stuff in the finish.
That's right.
Terrazzo won't crack because it's-
Because it's done, the concrete's poured and they come in after the fact and they do put some expansion, you, you see the little silver or aluminum, or aluminum strips that they put down. And that's where they would make color changes if we choose to do that, but we would do that regardless. That breaks up those pieces. I, I just have not seen on a suspended slab where you'd have a problem with the terrazzo hairline cracking.
And what's the life of this? Thirty years, twenty years. And where, where are we putting this?
The public spaces, which would be the lobby and then-
It's just the lobby.
The customer lobby.
All of this, so, they're here.
Over to the toilet room.
Yeah.
All right, Stephen, go on, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Polish concrete all the way through the building if we wanted to.
So Stephen, just to clarify from my understanding, the sheet you gave us with the numbers in the bottom half, it shows four thirty-four, nine sixty-three is the final number. So in other words, if you were to get approval to do everything you've listed there, we'd still have a net under budget of a hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars?
No, you'd have four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars remaining.
We'd have four hundred and thirty-four remaining?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Stephen, I have one more comment.
Okay.
Is that including the?
See, you have, you have a total of five hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars.
At the top.
At the top.
And then you subtract each one of those, okay.
And then I subtract each one on the bottom to show you where you would be at.
No, no, no.
It's about a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, we still have a hundred and twenty-five thousand roughly.
Yeah.
Okay, this just threw me all of a sudden, I thought we were four hundred and thirty-four thousand under budget, sorry.
Well, you have four hundred and thirty-four thousand available funding.
Right.
But at the one-twenty-
I, I know, I know.
I got really excited there for a second.
Just, just, just know that people will count how much we spend regardless of which pocket we pull it out of.
Absolutely.
And that is, that is why the top line number is the big thing for us.
What is the budget?
I would, I'm just going to give my opinion. One is terrazzo's a good yogurt flavor, that's, that's what I think is the best. I don't, I'm of the mind that is if, if we're under budget, I throw it back to Stephen to pick what he wants. If we're over budget, we're going to, we're going to be extremely meticulous and we're not going to allow it to be over budget. So if it's terrazzo and other things and, and we come in under budget, that's fine. But if you pick these things and we come in over budget, we're going to be pretty upset.
All right, so-
That's just my opinion, so.
Yes, Tom?
As we proceed to finish up, hopefully in the next month, if you give us final guidance tonight, we would suggest that we take some of these items that are kind of on the, on the fence, we're going to bid those as ad alternates. We do that all the time, it's easy to do. And let's find out what the real cost is and just as you suggested, Tim, let's see where the final costs, these are still budget numbers from Steel Freeman. Okay, let's wait till we get final numbers, let's see if we're over or under. And then you have the ability to accept some of these alternates like landscaping, the, the things that are kind of on the fence that I'm hearing, so it gives us the ability to do that. The second thing I need to have you consider is we need to pick finishes for the interior of this building. And we, we know the price range, but we don't know the color and the types and we're talking about carpets and tiles for bathrooms and wall tiles and paints and lots of things, countertops. It's very difficult to do bringing samples to you in a meeting like this. And I would strongly suggest that somebody from, all of you or one of you or some of you, along with staff representative, staff representatives, come to my office and we have this workshop to do this, so we can pull out the hundred samples around the conference table and narrow this down before we bring it to the big group. So that's just a comment, it, it's going to be the most productive way to do this. I can't bring all this stuff to you here and make it work.
All right, we appreciate that.
Nick, if I might add my two cents on that, I-
Yes, Garrett.
Figure that's Stephen and staff's deal, I'm concerned about the budget, not the way that-
Right.
The counters look.
I agree with that.
I agree.
I think the staff and Nick dress the best, so they may, they may pick.
You want colorblind Nick to go look at colors?
That's funny, are you colorblind?
Yes.
Oh, my God.
Me too, it's a sign of higher intelligence.
It's staff and Linda, Tim.
And Linda, is that, yes, exactly.
Oh, yeah, never mind.
Um, Tom, if you could just remind me, please, if, if we're under budget and I don't, I don't know exactly how much under budget we're going to be when all is said and done, but what was the delta to put the stone with the brick like we originally showed the residents back in October?
Are you talking about the Wayne's Coat Stone or the stone on the?
Stone outside.
Entry.
The stuff that is shown in this photograph.
I recall, and don't quote me, thirty thousand dollars?
How much?
Thirty?
On the rotunda, if, if you did the stone everywhere, it was all over, it was, it was well over a hundred.
It's like one eighty or something, isn't it?
Yeah, it was, I mean, if you did it because the, the retaining walls were specked with that in the front, sides, building, the front.
If we take the retaining walls out of the equation, we're just talking the building. And again, Jim, let's bid it as an alternate, let, maybe we get lucky, maybe, maybe some of these other costs come down and, and we can put it back in.
It was forty thousand, three hundred?
Just for the rotunda.
Just for the rotunda.
So, so basically, if, if we're a hundred and twenty-five, which is what we're saying-
Plus fifty from tonight.
No, no, hold on.
Okay.
If we're a hundred and twenty-five and we use tree mitigation and all that, so that zeros that out. PD, the CCPD number, that zeros that out, hot fund, that zeros that out. So we're basically sixty-five thousand under is what, if, if you add all of those other things which come up to fifty-nine thousand, five thirty-seven. So we're basically sixty-five if we keep our contingency in place.
Correct, but that assumes that we go back on what we said about the council chambers interior.
No, no, I'm just saying.
Right.
But this is the point I'm making.
Let's not eat it all up.
I'm not comfortable with sixty-five.
I'm comfortable with one-twenty-five, but I don't mind, and maybe that's why we should go down the list of each of these and trot away the-
So I, I'm good, I mean, I'm good with tree mitigation and tree funding. I said that at the last meeting, you want to use that, knock yourself out. The CCPD with fifty, I'm good with that.
All right, so let, let's go down.
Okay.
I think that's a good-
I think you do those three first because they basically zero each other out.
All right, so anybody object to using tree mitigation funds for the landscaping, which is the top item of thirty-one thousand, seven oh three?
I do and here's why. We just talked about entrance ways and all that, those are, that's going to add up. This seems- This seems, that seems like a better use of this money than the municipal building where a lot of people really aren't gonna see it. I guess, we, we removed this originally bef, when we were paying for it out of quote-unquote "real" money, because it wasn't necessary. So i- i- in that same line of thinking, my thought is, if it's not necessary, there's probably, it, it would look nice, but there's probably a better use for those tree funds if we're gonna be doing some beautification and some entryway monuments and all that kinda thing. We're gonna want some, there may be some opportunities there. Because nobody comes here except us, and that's, that's not gonna change just because the building looks nicer.
But I, I thought that we wanna use hot, hot funds for those entryways. That's what we're, that's what we're shooting for.
I'd, I'd be in favor of leaving everything on the table. I don't think we need it for this facility, so I would say no.
The one thing, I think the one thing we have to remember is that where we meet currently today is hidden from the public. I mean, nobody is driving down Municipal Drive. No one comes up here. On Trophy Wood, that is, that it's gonna be a very visible facility with, you know, to not just our residents who drive by it every day, but to those visitors who are coming in either staying at the hotel or eating at the restaurants. And I think that landscaping does make a building and a facility look nicer. It's why we do it in our homes, to make your homes look nicer. I think part of that entryways, the way we would do that is, you know, to me, this is part of our entryway improvements, because it is something that's, it's setting the tone for what you're going to drive into for the rest of the town. You know, I, I just think that aesthetically, it would, it will really make the facility look, it, it's a, it's a number we can find a way to pay for it, and I think it will help set the tone for the rest of that area about who Trophy Club is for people who drive by on one fourteen or who come there, who may not drive into the rest of the town. I just think it's something a little extra that looks nice.
I, I had Greg that had his hand up, then I'll come back to you.
No, you did.
No, no, go ahead.
I didn't have my hand up.
I was just gonna say, again, if we're other, under budget, he wants to make that decision. I'd let, let him make that decision.
I would go with that. All right.
Um, you know, I, I, I agree, I agree with you if we didn't have these, these funds, the tree mitigation. I'd much rather the landscape look good and I would not do as much inside, because of the fact that, um, i- if you really boil it down and you count everybody in the two and a half years that I've been on council that has walked through those doors right there, you're talking about half of one percent of our entire population. So it's not, I mean, who are we trying to impress in the inside? The outside, I think with us trying to get these restaurants and, and, and make that a hub, you know, uh, I just think that you can do a lot with landscaping and maybe you don't spend the money for the stone and things like that.
But we're, we're having this conversation right now as if one of the end zones here is no landscaping, and that's not the case. We left the meeting two weeks ago with a landscape plan that we were all happy with, that included landscaping, so...
Well, not all of us were happy with it.
As a body, we had consensus. So my point is, in terms of maximizing the allocation of available funds, I'm gonna say I'm against it.
Let me speak. Um, Ryland, I think we only had consensus, at least from my standpoint, on the willingness to reduce the budget. It wasn't consensus of look, for me. It was willingness to find a way to reduce money. So, I understand what you're saying. That's different than the way I felt, so just set the record straight.
Amen.
All right, so...
Garrett, Garrett.
Garrett?
Okay, so, three things. Um, first, I disagree with what you just said, Nick. I think we did have consensus on what the, the landscaping looked like. But having said that, I'm okay spending the tree mitigation funds however somebody else does. I don't have a dog in the hunt, because I fundamentally have a problem with the government charging a person to cut a tree down on their own property. It's wrong, it shouldn't happen, and we shouldn't be taking the money from citizens to cut their own trees down in the first place. I don't care what you do with it, it's blood money.
I would just say that it's, it's dedicated funds, maybe it's, it's the best use for it at this point. If, if there's a better use for it, let's use it, but if this is what's on the table, I'm, I'm for it.
All right.
And I think...
Mr. Mayor, I, I'd like also to say I agree with what...
We shouldn't waste it either.
Uh, town manager said, what you said, this building is not only visible by the people at the hotels, people in the restaurants, but everybody heading eastbound on one fourteen's gonna see it. And I think one of the things that attracted me and a lot of people to this town was the way it looked when you drove into it, when you drove around it. Uh, we have some of the best-looking medians and islands and landscaping packages for people to see. It, it has a certain ambiance and certain feel to it. And I don't think that the only town hall that will ever be built in this town, more than likely, uh, should look any less attractive or any less, uh, complete than, uh, the rest of the landscaping that's done around the entire town. And I certainly wouldn't want to have Value Place look better exterior than the town hall does, because it has better landscaping than we do, uh, or one of the hotels even. Uh, this is our people's house, and I landscape my home, and I bet each of you guys landscape your homes, and I think we need to have that sense of pride, and that building is a reflection on the entire town. If it looks cheap, if it looks incomplete, then I think it, it's a negative reflection on what the voters voted on back on October eighth, when we showed them pictures of what they were going to get for their bond, and they voted on the bond, they approved the bond, and now we're considering using that bond money to do medians that aren't even related to the town hall and PD.
No, we're not, Jim.
So just a minute, we have people that want to talk. Are you through?
We're not talking about using bond money for medians.
You're through, Jim.
Well, you mentioned that about using for the money for these other things.
Ryland, wait, wait.
I just wanted to make sure that, that we do as much as we can to deliver the product we sold on October the eighth that looks like the product we sold on October the eighth. And I can, I can see giving away some interior square footage. I can see cutting back on some of the interior items that the public doesn't see. But something as prominent as the building itself, sitting on that open corner for the world to see, I think it should look as best as it possibly can.
All right, so Philip, had to stand up?
Yeah, I, I fundamentally disagree with you on that, Jim, because we, first and foremost, sold, uh, how much we were gonna spend. And, you know, look doesn't matter if you don't have the money, and that's...
We do have the money.
But that's exact, but...
Okay, council, look, when someone has the floor, please don't make a comment when they're in the middle of talking. Don't talk over them, don't interrupt them. You wouldn't wanna be interrupted. Philip, I apologize for interrupting you, but I felt like we're not in an argument. We're in a discussion. Seek the floor. Later, you'll be considering our rules or procedures, and if you read them, you have violated them repeatedly. Let the person finish without interrupting. All right, Philip, you have the floor.
So, I'll just go back to at the last meeting, there was not consensus on this issue, because I made it very clear that if we have any tree mitigation, any kinda money left, I wanna use every bit of it for that landscaping. I was very clear on that.
All right. Uh, I was gonna make a motion unless somebody has a, all right, so I don't know which of you were first.
Quick, simple, one statement. In May of twenty fourteen, May of twenty fourteen, May of twenty fourteen, May of twenty fourteen, May of twenty thirteen, November of twenty fourteen, and November of twenty thirteen, we all sold ourselves as a council of needs and not wants. And we had a landscape plan that included landscaping, not cheap, not incomplete, not looking like the Value Place. We walked away from a meeting two weeks ago with that plan. I'm advocating the optimization of the available funds we have, which are finite, to be applied in other areas, not necessarily here. And I want everyone to consider that. If it's just me, that's cool, but I wanna be on record as being the one who focused on needs.
Garrett?
I just wanna make sure that, um, Jim made a comment, and I wanna correct the record. He just said that we were taking funds that were voted on for this bond and allocating them for the median. That's not what Ryland said. We're talking about tree mitigation funds. They're two completely separate things. I don't want people to watch this tape and think that, that what he's advocating is taking funds that were, for the building to do.
If I misunderstood, I apologize.
I just, I wanna make sure that...
Tim?
Uh, I'm gonna go back to a little both of what everyone said. So Jim said, you know, we sold people what this would be, what it would look like, and we told them what it would cost. So if we get the cost where it's supposed to be, we should get as close to what it's supposed to look like. That's what I believe. I also believe, as the rest of you, we, we put a lot of stock in Stephen. We believe in what he does, and if he gets it to where it's under budget, we should give him the latitude to pick what he chooses as most important to what needs to go back into the, into the building. Uh, that's just my opinion, but I, I wanna be on record stating that, so.
My motion is to take the items at the bottom of the page, uh, front landscaping, lobby flooring, lobby brick wall, PD secure fencing, council chambers interior, retaining wall east side, and authorize Stephen Sidell and his staff to, uh, do what they think is best based on available funding. If I get a second, I'll talk about it.
I'll second that.
All right, so Nick Sanders moved. I got a second from Jim Perro. Um, Tim, that's what I was trying to encompass in this...
Right.
Motion was, we can sit here all night and nickel and dime this thing, but at the end of the day, our staff has worked hard to bring it in under budget. We've made lots of adjustments. Uh, I think it's time to move forward. I don't have any problem with the bottom portion of that. Whether you use tree mitigation funds or not, isn't a big issue to me. Whether we use drainage funds or not, isn't a big issue to me. Whether we use all of CCPD or not, isn't an issue to me. Stephen and Stephen have worked hard, and the chief have worked hard, getting it under budget. I think making legitimate, good cuts that we will all be proud of. Uh, and so, that's the reason I made that motion is, I want you guys to move forward. You know that we're gonna sit here and have pro and con about little bitty pieces, and that's good, but that's the reason I made the motion. Anybody else wanna talk pro or con about the motion? Garrett, did you?
I, I don't, I, I think this is appropriate. I'm not sure if it's not. Just tell me, Nick. Uh, Ryland had brought up a, a question that I had, or a comment I had made, and I'm just wanna be reminded. Is this CM at risk? What did we end up doing here? And at what time, if, if we, if the, if the, if the general contractor is at risk, what, what, what did we, what did we vote on?
CMAR.
We're, we're not at risk yet. He has not given you a guaranteed maximum price yet.
So that's, that, and that's the second part of my question. At what point does that happen?
In about, we, we hope, with your approval tonight, we, we got about thirty days to make these changes. We, we've completed about fifty percent of the stuff you've entailed us to do two weeks ago. We've gotta reduce this building, get everything coordinated, checked, and then it's gonna take a couple of weeks to bid, so we're about six to eight weeks away from having that number.
Okay, that was my only question. I just wanted to make sure it's clear.
Jim?
I just have one question along with the, I didn't, one thing I didn't see on this list, and maybe it's already been addressed and I missed it, but one thing I wanted to make sure, we had at least two flagpoles in front of this building, one for the American flag and one for the Texas flag?
That's correct. We have, both of them are in there.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, as Garrett, I think you, that was a good question. We still haven't bid it.
Right.
We still may be back at the table when the bids come in. So, any more debate still isn't gonna necessarily saw this issue. I do like the idea, Tom, of some alternates. Give us some alternate prices on some things. And Stephen, I'm leaving that up to you to figure out what you want alternates on. That's the reason I made the motion that way. I trust that, that the staff has worked hard to do the right thing with the guidance that we've given it. So, anybody else?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna speak against the motion, because if you wouldn't have tied it all together, I would've, uh, agreed. But, uh, there's, there's things in there. I'm still not comfortable with sixty-five thousand is all we have. Uh, I think that number needs to be big, bigger. We haven't even put a shovel in the ground yet, and we're almost even. So, I, I don't agree with that motion.
Well, you do have, you do have fifty thousand dollars from reducing the building by the five feet moving it in. So, you're at, you know, sixty-five plus, right.
All right, Ryland?
I'm gonna speak against the motion as well. I, Tim's sentiment was the right sentiment, but I don't necessarily think that Tim Kurtz wants to add thirty-one thousand back into the council chambers that we just took out two weeks ago. Throughout this process, we have taken things out and they've come back, and we've said no again, and they've come back again. I'm tired of seeing things come back to me to ask me to pay for them again when I've said multiple times, I don't wanna pay for them. Um, some of these are, some of these aren't, uh, big enough to, to matter. It falls under the staff discretion thing if you're talking about four grand or whatever. But when you're talking about, we had a philosophical discussion about the council chambers. That's thirty-one thousand, seventy-three dollars of the people's money that I'm not going to spend on a throne for myself to sit on.
All right. Any other discussion?
Well, I was on, I was on a lonely island the last time with the council chambers. I just think it's the face of the town, people coming in, residents and visitors, but I don't wanna approve a package either.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I'd rather have it separate, and if it can be still left out there, fine. But I'm, I'm not gonna vote for a whole package, because I want one item.
All right, we're gonna call the vote. All those in favor of the motion, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. All right, Jim Perro and Sanders voted for, everyone else against. All right, council, you didn't wanna do it all together. Somebody make a motion.
I'll make a motion to, um, authorize staff to approve funding our flooring switch to terrazzo, the lobby brick wall, the PD secure fencing, um, and to consider the, uh, bollards on the east side of the building.
I'll second.
Is that the retaining wall east side? Is that what you're referring to?
Right, I'd, I'd like to see the bollards with the retaining wall as an option, that we could that way down the road, 'cause that's one of those things where, sorry, I'm still making the motion. I'll save it.
All right, so, motion is to authorize staff to move forward with lobby flooring switch to terrazzo, lobby brick wall, PD secure fencing, and retaining wall east side with having an option for bollards to replace that. Is that, yes, restate it. All right, I have a second.
I'm sorry, can I, before you finish saying that, and the, the hot funded parking, I think. Sorry, that was overlooked, but...
All right.
And I will second that.
So I have a question. Can the retaining wall come out of the CCPD funds? Because there's additional money's left.
Yeah, it could. I'd leave that as a, wait and see thing, yeah.
Um, I'd like to make amendment to have the retaining wall be funded by the CCPD.
Does this, can I ask a question? Does this have to, like, do you need a yes or no on these things today? Is that the deal?
I, I think we're to the point where we stop work if we don't get a direction on the...
So, so I just wanna make sure, if we don't say you have landscaping money now, I mean, that can, that can wait.
You need to tell me if I can reduce the building five feet.
Okay.
I need to know that tonight, or we're stopping work.
But the other stuff I'm talking about.
With regards to all those other things, we'll put them in as alternate. It, it, that's not a big deal.
That's all I'm looking for.
Okay. Uh, Greg, where did you say to, to, to take the funding from?
CCPD. It was a hundred thousand. I think we only allocated fifty.
For which piece?
The, uh, the wall, PD wall.
Okay.
Instead of the bollard.
All right. All right, do you have a second on Greg's motion to amend? I'll second it to have discussion. Anybody wanna discuss it? Garrett?
Sorry, I'm trying to get better at our procedures here, Nick. Um, I kinda feel like that was made in the motion. He was saying, look at the bollards as an option. So I think your amendment is redundant. Am I wrong, Ryland? Did I, did I just understand what you're saying?
He was saying, take the funds from CCPD.
Yeah, I mean, my motion was fund agnostic, if you will. I mean, I kinda feel like that's gotta, because it's an...
Why reduce the...
Because it's a, uh, I'm sorry, but I'll just explain why, what my thinking is. Because it's a as-yet-to-be-determined CCPD, uh, commitment, that's gonna be fluid. But that's something that, in the case of, we know the money's there, but in the case of the wall, either way, something there will happen. It's just a matter of how, where it comes from, I guess.
All right, Garrett?
So I'll speak against it then, because I, I, I'd like to leave it the way it is and just have those CCPD funds be allocated by the chief at the end. I think we'll be able to afford the wall.
All right, any more discussion about the amendment?
Just a quick question. Is tree mitigation in or out of this?
It's, it's out of it. It's not in it.
It's out of it.
That's right. One part of the motion.
Does, does this motion have anything to do with the shrinking of the facility?
Not yet. We'll take care of that separately.
Okay. But i- if, if we did shrink the facility, do we have to deal with this stuff now?
You, you do... You, you didn't have to necessarily, but, uh, you, to hit Phillip's target, if you don't deal with this now, you're still gonna be short, is my impression. Is that what you were looking at, Phillip?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
It would have been easier just to go one, one
Okay.
at a time, like you said.
All right, so, we have an amendment on the floor. All those in favor of the amendment, show your hands. Greg Lamont is the only one. All opposed, same sign. All right, same sign. All right, the amendment fails. We are back to the main motion. I'll try to restate it. Ryland? Ryland moved that we approve the items of lobby flooring switch to Torazo, lobby brick wall, PD secure fencing, council member, no, uh, retaining wall east side, and to get an alternate on bollards for the retaining wall east side when we bid it. Is that right, Ryland?
Yes, sir.
Parking spaces. Then you have the parking
No, I'm sorry, and, and the additional fourteen parking spaces with hot funds.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
All right.
I'd like to amend the motion.
All right.
I'd like to include the, uh, landscaping. Might as well do that one. It's only one left.
Yeah, just not the council chambers. I'll, uh, second that.
But your, your motion is dedicated, correct?
So I, yeah, I need some clarification. Are you wanting that as?
No, I want to do the landscaping exactly as it's laid out here, using that tree mitigation funds and tree city funding.
So who seconded? Uh, Tim?
Yes.
All right, that, motion to amend's on the floor. Garrett?
I, I'm gonna vote against it, Phillip, just because I need to argue with you on something every night. No, actually, um, I don't like them tied together. I'm okay with the other stuff, but I'd like to discuss the tree mitigation separate, so.
All right.
I'm a nay.
All right, so we had a motion to amend to put the front landscaping into the motion using tree mitigation and tree city funding. Any other discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to amend, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Garrett and Rowe voted against, everybody else voted for. The motion does carry. The motion has been amended. We're back to the amended motion, which is to do front landscaping, Torazo, brick wall, front lobby brick wall, secure fencing, retaining wall east side, additional fourteen spaces with an option on the retaining wall of bollards. Did I get all of that right?
Everything but the interior chambers.
Everything but interior is in this motion, as I understand it.
Now the lonely island for Lamont.
All right. All in favor of the motion, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. The motion does carry unanimously.
Begrudgingly.
All right. It was pointed out that, uh, I'll come back to this in a second. It was pointed out that, uh, the architects were wanting a definitive action on removing five feet as proposed. I didn't ask to vote on that. It looked like that we had consensus to do that. So at this point, uh, I'm gonna, uh, make a motion that we, we approve the suggested plan of removing five feet from the building and the redesign of the ramp and council chambers. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
The motion is second. Motion by Sanders, second by Lamont. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. That's accomplished. Just be specific, no doubt. All right, so, uh, the item that's left on it is council chambers interior. Greg, would you like to make a motion?
All right, let me go on a lonely island. I'll make a motion that we approve the thirty-one thousand oh seventy-three for the council chamber interior upgrade.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Lamont and a second by, uh, Perro. Any discussion? I'm sorry, thanks, Garrett.
That did not seem like a sincere thanks.
No, it, it is. It absolutely is that
I'm just joking with you.
But you, you can say something that makes me turn your direction, is my problem. You know, if I had those buttons, which have been removed.
Yes.
Ooh, oh, that hurts.
I'm gonna vote against. I'm, I'm thoroughly in Ryland's camp. I don't remember what you said, something about a throne. Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna spend thirty-six thousand dollars to build a throne to sit upon. No. Don't spend the money.
All right, let's, let's be specific. I'm a little bit offended about using the word throne, but, but that's just me. Nothing personal against y'all. The, the, the money is for, uh, Wayne's coating to help protect the walls when, uh, things move around is one portion of that. What else is that, Stephen? Is the council chamber interior.
It's several items, but Tom might be able to speak more specifically.
As I recall, we had stone behind, in that curved wall behind you, uh, which we thought we could, we liked that contrasting wall, but we thought we could do that maybe with, uh, in lieu of the stone, maybe with, uh, sheet rock and some reveals and different paints. Or we've had a, a seminar recently with some pre, pre-engineered wood products that looked pretty, pretty nice, that were cheaper than real wood. Um, so it was Wayne's coating. I think it was the finish of that wall. It was more, more sealing treatment of whatever that is, because you didn't like the circular thing, so we didn't proceed, and we haven't done any more work there yet. Okay, so it was how we were gonna handle the ceiling.
It was moving from like fluorescent lights to more can lighting.
So it, it, it was a variety of things, and as I recall, at the last meeting, we cut that in half and said, show us what you can do with fifteen thousand dollars in cuts, as I recall. And we haven't, we haven't started that yet, pending your affirmation or not.
So, so it could be, uh, bid it with an option.
Could, yes. Yes.
And just for simplicity's sake, if, without doing this thirty-one thousand, what is that council chamber gonna look like? Like this room here, just, just plain sheet rock and acoustical tiles on the ceiling, or?
Pretty well, yes. Yeah.
All right, so I just wanted to make sure you were clear on what the item was you were voting on. It'd been a long time, and we discussed many items last time. So, now any other comments or discussion? We have a motion by Greg Lamont and a second by Perro on the floor. Uh, Ryland?
I'll just say that I'm gonna vote against the motion now and any other time that it comes back to us before the room is finished out and we have our first meeting in it. Because I feel like we're gonna get asked again.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I agree. Well, I, I thought we were gonna have fifteen steps and wear robes and wigs, so. Uh, it's, it's, you know what I mean? This is functional. This, this gets done exactly what we need to do. And I'd much rather spend the money on the outside than I would on the inside. That's just been my opinion.
I'm gonna vote in favor of the, the motion. Uh, I think it needs to look nicer than this room, personally. So, uh, I'm gonna vote in favor of the motion. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd just like to stop with what you said and what Greg said. Uh, this is gonna stand for decades to come. Like the out, like the outside, this is a room where people will see. They will not see inside the police department wing. They will not see inside the staff wing for the most part. But they will see the lobby, they'll see the outside, and they'll see the council chamber. And I think for a brand new and the only town hall that we're building to look like this room does, uh, doesn't reflect the town as a whole and the, the way the town is laid out and the way the, the town looks. Uh, this just doesn't look like that for the long term. And so I'm gonna vote in favor along with you and Greg.
All right. All those in favor of the motion on council chambers interior, show your hands. Perro, Sanders, Lamont, all opposed. Uh, everybody else is opposed, so the motion fails. All right. Stephen, unless I'm mistaken, that's all of this that we were gonna discuss. Was there anything else?
Yes, sir.
Tom, did you have anything else?
Mayor, just in closing, if I could have a couple of minutes.
Sure.
Uh, we have some brick samples. Uh, I've just had some initial feedback. We may not have hit that yet, so we'll work with staff to, to get there, okay? We'll do that, Stephen. Uh, and if you haven't had a chance to look at them, look at them, please.
I have looked at them, and my comment is, I really was wanting more contrast within the segment.
I think that's, that's what we're hearing, so we will, uh, revisit that. Finally, I, I want to apologize for any angst that we've contributed to this, to tonight's discussion and past discussions. This, this is a trying construction period. We, we came off of a recession where things were very cheap. And I think we, along with other design professionals and contractors, underestimated the inflationary, uh, cycle that we're in right now. I've talked to three different contractors, including Mr. Freeman. And what we had predicted is, is what we had heard, three to four percent inflationary costs are now one percent a month and could continue. Had we known that, we would have planned a li- a little differently. Our staff was a little over exuberant in terms of some of the materials they initially picked, like pavers for the exterior patio, uh, which probably shouldn't have been there. Uh, we relied on some consultant costs that were not accurate, and we should have, uh, studied that a little harder. And, uh, we probably should have had a larger contingency from the get-go for foundations because we did not have a geotechnical report and for systems, electrical, mechanical, heating, and so on. So, um, and, and we overdesigned some of the stuff over the town standards, which you apparently like, but it's caused some discussion. So I apologize for that. Uh, the value engineering process is normal. If you, if you were to ask me, how normal is this process? On one to ten, I'd say it's a nine. It's painful. But it happens on every project. And that being said, uh, we'll, we'll continue on, and we're gonna get you there, and we'll get this ground broke, and we'll have a beautiful building. We're gonna try and get to, uh, to what you think you promised to the voters and do the best we can.
You know, I'd like to add to that. The, the, the problem, the problem that I had in August, ele- August eleventh, we came and the building was seven point seven. And staff asked for five point five. Nick and Jim tried to go to five point nine. We, we ended up settling on five point four. You, you fast forward, um, three months, three, four months, we have the town hall meeting where that Jim was talking about. And, um, we present to the residents seven point seven. You, you were here. You had the, the model and everything. And then, uh, and, and the look. So we had all that ironed out. Fast forward again, another three months. It wasn't until January of this year that all of a sudden we, we hear, we get an email, and it's Trophy Club, we have a problem. And it's at that point. So I understand, you know, when you say things were escalating at one percent a month, but we never heard anything. There was no red flag. There was no...
We, Phillip, we didn't hear it till January either.
But you, you had to have.
We, we were late in engaging the construction manager because of the election. We missed some things, including the owner's contingency. I thought Stephen had it. He thought I had it, and we did not have that. So there, there are four or five major things that contributed to that, and we didn't know that until we hired the construction manager.
All right.
I have just one quick thing.
Ryland?
I think this is an incredibly healthy process. I eat conflict for breakfast, so if we were doing it any other way, we'd be remiss, and we wouldn't be doing the right thing for our residents, taxpayers. So I think everybody in the room, challenges aside, and, and Tom listed several. We've introduced several on ourselves as well throughout the process. I think all told, we're doing the right thing. I don't, I did not expect an easy berth here, so. And, and we saw some creative work tonight, too, that saved us some money. So, you know, good job on everybody's part.
Garrett?
I'll, I'll echo what Ryland said. I think, I think you've been visiting with us now since most of us have got on council. This is not a, a group of guys that just says, yes. Obviously, we, uh, I think we enjoy conflict and we enjoy the debate, and I think we're all driven to save tax dollars money, so this process was, I believe, healthy and, you know, I, I've enjoyed the exercise.
Okay.
As long as we come in under budget. That's exactly what I was gonna say.
Asterix. Tim, exactly, you were gonna say that?
I, well, I would have said, you know, I don't take anything personally. I don't get offended. As long as we come in under budget, then I'm fine.
All right. All right, uh, I think we're through with this item unless Tom or Stephen have anything. We through? All right, we will move on. Uh, Tom, thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Item eight, consider and take appropriate action regarding an ordinance amending subsection F, community pool fees within section A one point oh one two, parks and recreation and special events of code of ordinances of the Town of Trophy Club and providing an effective date. Uh, at this point, unless someone has questions, I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty sixteen dash oh eight. Anybody have any questions for clarification?
So moved.
All right. Reed moves. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Kurtz. All right, who was it that had a comment? Stephen, yes.
We did implement everything that, that the council, um, had suggested at the prior meeting. However, there's one item in regards to, uh, the, the non-resident rental items, which I would recommend that, that you add to this, which would be, if they can't get in by themselves and they can't rent a pavilion. So I would remove pavilion rental as part of the fee structure as well. So this, this still allows them to rent the entire pool facility or a portion of the pool facility by themselves, which would, you know, and we open this up to residents prior to non-residents being able to. But, uh, you know, what is still in there is the, the ability for them to rent, rent a pavilion, which would be during nor- normal business hours, which they can't gain access during normal business hours, so it really doesn't make sense to be.
So, page what of the packet, and tell me specifically. Three oh five, or does it? I think that's where most of this stuff is.
Staff report three oh three. So three oh five.
I just didn't remember seeing that in the ordinance.
It is page two of the ordinance. I'm not sure which page on the packet.
All right, page two, yep.
Right, it's under the non-resident rental rates, and there's a pavilion reservation rate, which is during normal business hours.
Oh, down at the bottom. Okay, pavilion reservation's one hundred dollars.
That's correct.
Second line from the bottom on page three oh five of the packet. So, Reed, would you agree to remove that line in your motion?
Yes.
And Kurtz, would you agree to that?
I do.
All right. So the motion is to approve twenty sixteen dash oh eight ordinance with the removal of pavilion reservation on page two of the ordinance, page three oh five of your packet. Any other discussion?
Early returns on this, um, in terms of resident feedback is very positive.
I was, I was gonna ask. Thanks for saying that. I hadn't had anything negative about it.
You know, there's people voting tonight, so. Yeah, that, I've heard good things, that people are happy that this change was made, so. Kudos to Haley Little for bringing it to the park board's attention.
All right, all those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Item number nine. Consider take appropriate action regarding proposed amendment to the Town Council Rules of Procedures and provide direction of staff regarding related ordinance amendments. A, consider take appropriate action regarding an ordinance repealing Division Two Meetings and Rules of Procedure of Article one oh three, Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club Code of Ordinances and adopting a new Division Two Meeting and Rules of Procedures of Article one oh three, Town Council, and providing an effective date. Ordinance twenty sixteen oh nine. I do have a couple of changes that I would propose, so I would take you to that section, starting on page, uh, three oh nine of your packet. Many of the changes, uh, that were incorporated dealt with changing where maybe it said mayor or chairman to presiding officer and defining that. Uh, so a lot of those, I think, are just what I'm gonna call clerical cleanup things, making it clear and letting it work for all organizations within our body. If you look at, um... 1.03.035 on page 313, number A, notice there's a sentence added at the end that says, "Add at the end of each agenda item, the agenda should specify the first initial and last name of the person adding the item to be considered on the agenda." Then, my note is dealing with charter reference, item C on that same page. It's clerical. I think a presiding officer of the council, comma, add a comma, appointed board, comma, commission. Clerical to add a comma. I think that is the way that should read. Does that make sense to everybody? See, I did actually read this and caught that. Next page, under F. Each council meeting, I read a statement at the front on citizens' presentations and one of the phrases says is, says, "Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority." Item F doesn't say that. I think that should be added at the end. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority.
Good catch.
I agree.
Yep.
All right. Patricia, you with me on that one?
I'm sorry, I was on the prior one. I was trying to...
You were trying to find the comma?
I'm not with you on that one because that one says, "The presiding officer of the council-appointed board commission corporation under appointed body." So, where was the comma going?
A presiding officer of a council, comma...
But this is council-appointed board commission or corporation. So, is it?
Oh, I read it as council was a separate body there.
That's, I'm so sorry. I was so back on that one.
I'm sorry.
Imagine if there was a hyphen between council and appointed and that would be the way it would read. Council-appointed board da-da-da-da.
Yeah, okay. I just read it as council was one of the bodies listed there and so I was adding a comma. Okay. Okay, sorry. Item F, the next page, at the end of that paragraph, "Add topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority." We say that at every meeting. I read it, but it doesn't say it there. Now, it might say it somewhere else, but I read it three times and I still couldn't find it. So, I think it's missing. All right? So, it looks like there was consensus that you had that. I think I had one more note, just a second. Yeah, it's on page 318 of the packet. Now, 318 has a number of additions, starting at the top of the page, with one, two, and three, and then motions. On item three, it says you talk four minutes. What if somebody wanted to say, because all of this says I talk four minutes before debate? If you read this. You introduce the items, you ask questions, you answer the questions, you go to citizens and they can talk four minutes. Now, the council debates and they get two minutes. What if they said, "I'd like to talk after I hear the debate." And if that's the case, we limit them to two minutes in this.
I, I like that. I'm a, I'm always a fan of giving the opportunity to speak. And, and, and I also, personally, anywhere where we have a minute, you know, the, the implication of a time limit is that it's the chair's discretion.
Right.
So, as long as we retain that it's the chair's discretion. And I know some places it's written there and some places it's not, but, um, now that's a good idea to speak.
That's already stated in B3 further down.
It is. It's still the chair's discretion. I just was going to suggest that you add to three under A. A person can reserve the right to delay their, reserve their four minutes till after council debate.
I think the, the actual, this is going back to the prior council before all of you were on here. The nicer times. The, the intention there is, one, we, we eliminated the ability to give minutes. So...
We did.
So, people were, you know, lining up and I'll give him my minutes. I'll give him, so the guy had 20 minutes, you know? We could have heard, yeah, yeah. But the intention there was, before it was three and three. And I think the, when we changed to four and two, basically it's six minutes. You know, whether you split it up or how you split it up, that, that was kind of the intention. But I think that the two is, is basically at that point, you know, we're, we're about to vote and so it's just a... So, I, I don't, how you, how you divvy that up, I don't know. Like, that's up for debate.
All right. I was just bringing it up
You know...
as a point to discussion to say, do you want, we've had it this year where somebody said, "I'll wait and talk till after I hear what y'all have to say." And so, our, what happens a lot of times to us is we don't have a lot to say and then all of a sudden we have a motion and then we have 30 minutes of discussion. If I didn't talk to begin with, I got only two minutes. And maybe I would like to read a four-minute speech, but I'm going to wait and hear what you say because if you solve my problem, there's no use of me talking. So, that's...
I think, you know, and, and again, I, I think it was just a guideline. You've never, you've never stopped anybody. You know, you've never had a time limit or anything like that. So, you know...
I've stopped Linda before.
But I could see where this would apply, you know, to, to a future council, but I, I think you leave it four, too.
All right. Anybody want to make a comment? I'm not going to change it unless somebody wants to do something, so.
Nope.
I'm fine with it.
All right. So, the rest of the changes, I think, we're still moving along the way we had said
On, on 314, G4.
Page 314.
Page 314 of the packet. G4. Can we just, can we say, "Who shall direct the chief of police or his designee to remove such offenders from the room?" Because he may, it's not every...
That's right. That's a good place. Yep. Patricia, you with that one?
Yes.
Everybody okay with that? All right.
And he can designate the mayor pro tem to remove the disturbance if...
Or Adam.
If he needs to.
Since he's playing with his home.
Adam, 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 he run out the door.
It's work.
All right. So, um...
Give Greg a taser.
All right. So, those were the changes. So, your, your choice is to move ordinance 2016-09 based on changes presented in the packet and changes discussed tonight, or just let it come back on consent with the changes, if you want to see them one last time. I'm, I'm fine with letting them come back on consent if you just want to read through the clerical. But Patricia, do you think you've got things good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Everybody okay with? You want to vote on it tonight or just let it come back for consent?
It can come back to consent.
Everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Okay.
All right. So, we will not vote. We didn't receive a motion on 2016-09. We gave direction to staff and the direction includes those changes and to bring it back on the consent agenda for a final version. All right. Item 10. Items for future agenda to include discussion of agenda items or consideration on the upcoming regular session council agenda for March 22nd, 2016 meeting, and discussion of the Town Council Future Agenda Items List to include discussion of the below items from the Future Agenda Items List. Item number one, consider take appropriate action regarding signage and medians at Trophy Club Drive, Trophy Wood Drive, Indian Creek, and possibly Bobcat, which is an item that's been on there some time. And B, review ordinances regarding town homes, condos, and apartments. That's been on there for some time. Item C, item number three, which is on that list of future agenda items, discussion of possible uses of hotel occupancy tax funds. Item D, discussion and action related to town garage sale, estate sale, moving sale items. And item five, establish a reserve policy for Trophy Club Park. Only comment I want to make is in reference to B. We have, have we received the plat documents from PD 30? Stephen?
The preliminary plat is scheduled to be heard on Thursday evening this week.
So, the developer, PD 30, is moving forward. At this point, apartments are still in the mix. So, the whole reason I put item number two wa, there was, if you're going to change something, you need to change it before they submit final plans. At least, that's always been my concern. Now, that might be risky in changing at this point. But that's the reason I added that thing is, is there something that we should consider that we want to deal with before that moves any further? All right, so...
Can I make a comment?
Yes. Garrett.
This is for clarification purposes. Because I heard what you said and I understand what you're saying, but for the casual observer who might hear that comment, you said if we might want to change something, maybe we might want to do it now. Changing the fact that apartments are going in PD 30...
Is not the change.
Is not an option this council has. I just, I want to be very clear about that.
I appreciate that clarification.
Because it made it sound like if we want to change something, we might as well say it now. Apartments are in PD 30. That was voted on by a previous council and we can't do anything about it.
Here's why I brought that up initially. We, we have a citizen who lives in town who used to be very involved with things in Irving, who has, where a town has become an apartment Mecca, if you want to use that word, maybe. And his concern, Patricia cringe, his concern was things like there are four families living in a two-bedroom apartment. There's no restriction on how many people can live in a two-bedroom apartment. Now, I don't know if you can legislate that, but, but that was what I heard partly plus other items that happen when you get high-density housing. And what's in PD 30 is high-density housing with parking garage. So, I doubt that we have anything in our ordinances that deal with parking garages. So, here, this thing is, might move forward because there's now some activity of plating. Should we be looking at some items? And that's the reason I placed that item on the agenda was to say, "Staff, recognize you're going to have high-density potentially. What would you change? What, what are other towns doing? How do you deal with that? And should council discuss that?" So, this was on the future agenda list and it's not moved in, since August of 14. And so, I'm just bringing it up to see what we can do.
One, one thing that there are, within the PD 30 document, there are descriptions and aesthetics and parking garage aspects to that particular development that govern that development. So, anything that we would be including in a revision to the code of ordinances not, would not necessarily apply to that particular development. However, I would say that as we look at a redevelopment plan, as a comprehensive plan that we currently have an RFQ for, this very much would be part of that aspect on how do we want to update our current ordinances to reflect and where we are within the metroplex and being a little more dense because we're no longer on the outskirts, we're in the middle of everything. What do we want our future community to look like? What standards do we want to have or not to have? And I, so I do think it's very much an appropriate conversation to have in the context of a, of a comprehensive plan. I'm not sure that you're going to have the ability to make specific requirements of that particular development that are not agreed upon by that developer.
All right. Garrett, then Greg, and then we're going to see if a citizen wants to make a comment.
Yeah, and Dennis might want to chime in on this, but I, I agree with what Stephen's saying. And once again, this is for clarity purposes. This is a play, a PD. So, it's really kind of baked. This cake's baked. If we're talking about the plating process, there's really nothing we can do during plating to talk about density or anything like that unless, Dennis wants to disagree with me, but PD is kind of that, that thing that exists that kind of gives you the pass to a lot of the ordinances and whatnot that are put on the rest of the development of town. So, I, I don't, I don't think there's anything we can do to change this PD. And I don't want to mislead people.
So, Greg, you had your hand up?
I'm sorry.
I was just looking more at this as, like, for instance, we don't have it here, but the renting of rooms in a house. How, how can we get into that aspect of it? That's something for a comprehensive plan. We should be prohibiting that.
I think, I think that's all appropriate conversation to have. I'm not sure, again, you know, anything that you do with the PD is going to have to be negotiated. It's a contract. And so, if you want to make some suggestive changes, they have the ability to make some suggestive changes and ultimately it's a, it's a compromise or an agreement.
I'm not referring to PD 30.
I, I know. I'm just saying, but yes, I think that that would be something that we would want to cover here. It's something that we talked about last week regarding, you know, instances of people renting out rooms. How, how do we want to handle that? Because that's a new phenomenon that didn't exist even 10 years ago or five years ago to some extent. So, I think that that's, again, an appropriate place to have that discussion.
All right. Ronan had his hand up and then...
Oh, I had mine up for him.
Oh, he had it up.
You before. Well, he is wearing a tie. I think the tie goes to the guy wearing the tie. No, um, two thoughts. One, a, a quick note on the, Garrett made the point about PD. Our other multifamily developments are also in PD zoning. They're old PDs, very old PDs, probably among the oldest in town. But I think that's a, probably a, a much deeper discussion that staff's going to really have to do homework on. My recommendation for the task at hand for what we're talking about tonight would be that if there's things that staff thinks we should hear, that they already have on their mind, let's hear it. If there's things that any individuals think like they've just brought up, I would, I would say, take it to staff, to, to Stephen to bring it forward and maybe we can hear some, without trying to boil the ocean, maybe we can hear some individual things that pertain to this.
Phillip?
Yeah. If we leave it on there, I want to add the ability to put hotels, bed and breakfasts, things like that. I think that that's what Greg and Stephen are talking about. They're not talking about a person who rents a room for years. I've, I've received a citizen complaint recently where a lady was, is renting out four rooms as a bed and breakfast. And traffic is just up and down her street. And so, what do you do in that situation? Because that is a, there's people parking out in front. There's people coming and going. So, that's the sort of thing that, that I'm sort of looking at. Is there anything we can do? Is there not anything? Should we be charging them hotel occupancy? There's, there's, God's the limit on that.
All right. Patricia?
There are multiple issues with that scenario. We do have, you know, home occupation. That would be an improper zoning if it's in a residential district. We do have rental property ordinance that we have used and we talked about that here a few months ago when some issues came up regarding that. The Federal Fair Housing Act defines family. So, it's going to tell you what a, quote, "a family" is and that, and I think we even have some of those regulations within our, our ordinance as well. It's been a while since I've looked at those, but we do have some regulations in place. And if you're talking about those standard code-type violations and health and safety type things, then we can certainly look in, into those for not just PD 30 rental property, but all rental property within the town.
Yeah. I think, I think the main thing is, is, like Stephen said, this is a new phenomenon. Are we, are our ordinances matching what reality is?
All right. Dennis, you still want to say something? Please come forward.
Dennis Sheridan, One Hill Crest Court Trophy Club. Mr. Mayor, I'm in favor of the review. It's positive. The town already has an occupancy code. We've adopted the IOBC, International Building Code, and that specifies how many people per bedroom are allowed. But that's to be reviewed and I'm not playing lawyer tonight, but it does cover it. The other is, for an example, PD 30 or the quorum or any other multifamily or any PD we've got. You have specific specifications specified in a PD. Then, usually in a paragraph, you have a coverall that says, "And any prevailing Trophy Club ordinances would be enforced if the PD doesn't specify it." "And any prevailing Trophy Club ordinances would be enforced if the PD doesn't specify it." As an example, PD 30 does not specify how many people can occupy a bedroom. So if your review was to modify that, that would not, I'm not playing lawyer, please. But that would not violate the, the PD, so you can still review it. But it would have, but the PDs would prevail if specified. And I'm subject to review on that occupancy, but I recently asked Ron to look at it, and he updated me on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron?
Thank you, counselor.
Hey, the reason that this, this is not fitting so good, and this conversation's hard, is we're doing two different things. PD 30, PDs are gonna regulate mostly construction standards. That's like Councilman Reed said, that's pretty well-baked on this one. But we do need to strengthen our ordinances with multifamily. He's right, or Dennis is right about, the building code does restrict that, but also we adopted the property maintenance code, and that's where we get a lot of those issues with the apartment, that they've got too many people in there, boy, that's a nightmare to try to, to regulate that, but we do have the ordinances to do that. We do need to strengthen them because of some of the new things that have come up with the bed and breakfast and things like that. And so the comprehensive plan will help us with that. And if we do have more multifamily, we are gonna have to strengthen those ordinances and maybe put some amendments to our property. We have a property maintenance code that protects us pretty well. It's, it's got the COG amendments in it, and it works, but for our specific uses, that's what we need to do. We do need to strengthen that, but that's not it within a PD that we can do that, that I see.
All right, thank you. All right, so the item, I guess, will stay there if we want to bring it back. Phillip, maybe your suggestion is to add an item specifically for your topic, if you want to, to future agenda, unless you just want to modify this somehow. You had a suggestion, I think.
For now, I'll just leave it off, staff is working on some of that stuff.
All right, so the only thing that I would add to our future agenda list, and I talked to Stephen about that. At the Tech Dot meeting, there were some citizens concerned about the fact that the construction of the sound wall would, once again, eliminate vegetation, potentially like the Encore construction did, and said, wouldn't it be nice if, if the wall looked better and said something about Trophy Club? And so it turns out there is a state program to provide money for vegetation along a wall such as that. And then, as you have seen in numerous places, there are places where you stamp something in the concrete. So the suggestion the, the person had that was a citizen said, "We're a golf cart community, we're surrounded by two golf courses, or we surround two golf courses." One was Ben Hogan who designed a course, the other is Byron Nelson High School, and Byron lived in the area. Maybe stampings of their famous poses were something that could be in the wall, that might say something, maybe the TC logo. So it wouldn't just be a blank wall. So I'm suggesting, put it on future agenda. There's something we have to do to instruct Denton County to do so, I believe, if we want to go after those grants. So maybe it's sufficient, just you comment now and see if you want the staff to go forward with that. I don't know how much time we've got, Stephen, to deal with that.
Yeah, it seemed like they were under a time crunch.
What you're, we're talking about kind of two different things. One are the form liners, and the form liners are the paneling, the, the aesthetics of what the wall looks like, that's called a form liner. And they have, Tech Dot has several that are standard form liners, like stone, or brick, or, you know, what I like to call corduroy. And so you have those, and if you want something different, they're open to that, but you pay the difference in the cost. That would have to come very quickly if we wanted to do that, because they're looking to bid this very soon. And we would need to know where you would want to do this, what design, you'd have to get the design, those types of things. The second aspect that you're talking about is beautification, and there are grants along Tech Dot roads, and I believe, off the top of my head, they're called blue ribbon grants. They typically will not cover the design of something, but they will cover the implementation and oftentimes, like, a year of maintenance or assistance with maintenance. So if we wanted to do some, you know, this may be something as we look for our entryways, do we want to do something along parts of our border? Do we want to do some additional trees, or some grasses, or things like that? There are grant programs available for that, and something we could explore. That, I think, we could do at any time, it's not as time-sensitive as the form liner discussion.
When talking to Andy Eads, I got the impression that the county might be willing to provide funds for some of that, based on his comment. Maybe that's not true, but his statement was, we could surely include something like that. I took that as funds. Anyway, so it was just an item for discussion, do you want to try to deal with it, council? I wasn't making the decision, again, it's the process of, do you want to discuss it as a council? Two items is what Stephen is saying, one of them is stamping something, and they'll probably cost us. To me, Hot Tax could do that, if you're advertising tourism, golf cart community puts heads in beds, I think it qualifies, but. And then the other is, if in fact that blue ribbon grant can come later, I got the impression it needed to kind of go with it, but I could be wrong there. All right, so anybody want either of those items on future agenda, or not, or?
I've no, no opposition, I'm interested in hearing.
All right, so maybe make it two items, Holly. A discussion of form liners on sound wall, and that needs to come sooner than later. And discussion of blue ribbon grants for beautification along the sound wall. All right, then call your attention to pages 336 and 337 of the packet. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Phillip.
Are you, are you doing, so you did future agenda first?
I just happened to do it, sorry.
Okay, because I'd like to add something whenever.
The future agenda?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, I would like to add, or I'd like to explore the possibility of golf cart parking in our parks. I really, and I don't know if it's too late for, you know, Teak Nolan Perkins to, to design something on Independence West while they're doing the Veterans Memorial, but I think, I think it's, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback about Meet You Anywhere doing it, and I think that we probably should have kind of adopt some of that, and, and maybe do that at Harmony, you know, where we're doing that, and just look at areas in our parks where we can designate golf cart parking, which I think will help us, you know, alleviate some of the parking issues that we have.
Can I add to that, Nick?
Yes, go ahead, Garrett.
If it's gonna be on there, so Adam, this is probably gonna go to you, because it has to do with parks. Just in that conversation, or that discussion, one of the things to keep in mind is that, somebody like me, that, or Phillip, that does use a golf cart a lot, not just necessarily parking in the parking lot, that, or in the vicinity of that. If you think about it, people that drive golf carts around town typically like to park them in pretty close proximity to where they end up at, because you have items in there that might get stolen. For example, I'll drive up to the park to play basketball with the kids, and I want to drive it as close to the basketball court as I can. So when you think about that, is there an option to put, you know, some by the baseball field, so people can keep their eye on there?
You just have to look at it, because there's motorized issues in the park.
Right, yeah, I'm not saying it's an easy issue, but I think we should talk about that, and that will, golf carts are just easy to jump into, take stuff out of. If they're at least in, where people can see them, I think that would cut down on.
So would that be fair to say, regulations and guidelines for golf cart use and parking in the parks? That sound somewhat specific and vague enough to give us, so I couldn't state that again, Holly, if I had to.
You could put Schaffner slash Reed on that.
Schaffner slash Reed on that, Holly. Okay, anybody else on a future agenda? All right, then pages 336, 337 is next agenda. Stephen, any comments about the next agenda, or anybody have any questions about it?
I, I have a question, but Stephen can go first, if. Is, is, is there really a need for number 16? I mean, I just, I hate for the guy to have to come and give a presentation. Don't we have that, we have that basically budgeted, right?
Yes, it, we're in year two of a three-year contract with Patrick Prather.
It's up to y'all, there's, we've got a lot of questions about Zika, and he's willing to come, and you know, he will talk a lot about it, but it's up to you guys, if you want to hear that.
I had rather, just my personal feeling, I'd rather maybe April get with Patrick, and they put some kind of presentation and put it out there on social media so more people.
We can do that. The only thing we're changing this year, instead of three gravity traps, that we're adding a new kind of trap that catches Zika mosquitoes, and so we'll be doing four. Now, he'll go into a lot more detail about that, but we're happy to remove that, or.
The reason I say that, I just, I think, I think staff, I think Patrick, I think y'all did a phenomenal job last year. It was, it was miles ahead of, you know, what we had previously, where we wanted to carpet bomb. So, so I think, I, I mean, I have trust that we're going in the right direction on that.
Anybody object to just removing item 16 and letting staff deal with that issue?
We don't need the heebie-jeebies.
Okay, Stephen, no objection to remove item 16 from our agenda, and y'all just deal with it appropriately. And I think the request is to try to put something out to educate the residents as best we can.
And on 17, are we still in a holding pattern on that?
That's the community garden Trophy Club wall.
Waiting on the HOA, or waiting, because the last time you said that you weren't gonna bring this forward.
Well, we've put it on there anticipating that there would be a conclusion. I know from the last, from what I understand of last week, it was the HOA is still putting together their communication with their thoughts on it. You know, and I know that Mr. Powell was here this evening, and how we want to resolve that, you know, from a staff perspective, we're ready to either have a decision about what's going to happen with the community garden, or, or are we not going to do that? And we keep waiting to, because I know there's been some alternative sites, they're waiting on a particular HOA for comment, and once we have that, we bring that back and, and see what happens. It's kind of been a placeholder, just so we don't forget it.
17's a placeholder, it may or may not come forward. All right, anybody else? All right, I think that concludes our regular agenda. We are scheduled to go into an executive session to discuss interlocal agreement, and I'm under the impression that we should do that tonight. Anybody not want to do that tonight? All right, so the time is 9:03, and as soon as I finish reading this, we will go into an executive session. Pursuant to Texas Government Code, annotated subchapter 551, council will convene in the closed executive session as authorized by a, section 551.071, consultation with attorney under subsection 1, when the governmental body seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation, and subsection 2 for consultation with its attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Department of Texas clearly conflict with Open Meetings Act 551.071, 1 and 2. Legal advice regarding fire and emergency medical services in our local agreement with the town of Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number 1 for fire department services and related matters. We are in closed session and take a short recess. We will reconvene into regular session, it's 9:50 PM. Item 12, consider take appropriate action regarding the executive session. I move that we authorize the town manager to make our suggested changes to the proposed interlocal agreement for fire protection services based upon legal advice and submit to the mud. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Lamont, any discussion?
I think that we've had some productive work here, and I think what we are talking about submitting is going to be something that's gonna set us up for a quick and relatively painless process of getting this document approved.
Anybody else? All right, all those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. It is 9:51, do I have a motion to adjourn? Parrow, Muz, have a second?
Second.
Row seconds, all in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. Thank you, we are adjourned.